Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Apopka Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of, excuse me, July 12th, 2022. If you would please stand with me for a moment of silent prayer and a pledge to the flag. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first order of business, I'd like to introduce our newest Planning and Zoning Commission member, Mr. Wes Doomey. Could you give us a brief rundown of who you are, Wes?
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wes Doomey here, I'm proud to be serving the city, is a Planning and Zoning Commission member. I live over on the southeast side of Apopka, near Bear Lake Highlands. I promise to be fair and thorough in all my dealings and will be very subjective when it comes to the land development code and the regulations of the city of Apopka and objective when it comes to listening to your all's comments about these different developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that, from the public, that has a comment that is not on an agenda item that is listed today? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the first is the approval of minutes of the Planning Commission meeting held April 12th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ryan. Do I have a second?
Just a second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Item number two, approval of minutes of the Planning Commission meeting held May 10th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to accept.
Motion by Commissioner Doomey. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes. All right, item number one, change of zoning and assignment of neighborhood overlay and master plan development plan Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three rezoning master plan and major development plan. Subject properties are within the one mile radius of the interchange of O'Kiva Parkway and Kelly Park Road. The project site is located north of Kelly Park Road, east of Plymouth Sorento Road, and west of Foliate Tray, approximately 39 acres in size. Properties have a future land use designation of mixed use, and these properties within the KPI form-based code area are permitted a minimum density of one dwelling unit per acre and a maximum density of five dwelling units per acre, as well as a minimum floor area ratio of .05 and maximum of .5. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from transitional to KPI MU with a neighborhood overlay. The proposed KPI MU zoning is compatible with the intent of the city's KPI form-based code. The applicant is requesting approval of the accompanying master plan and major development plan. The Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three master plan major development plan proposes the development of 79 rear-loaded townhome units and 63 front-loaded single-family detached units. The rear-loaded units will have a minimum lot width of 34 feet, a minimum living area of 1,600 square feet and up to two stories. The front-loaded units will also have 1,600 square feet in living area and 55 feet of lot width. There are no minimum and maximum living area and lot size requirements in the KPI form-based code area. This subdivision is a continuation of the existing Oaks at Kelly Park Faces One and Two on the east. Access to this project site is provided on Kelly Park Road via the existing access for Faces One and Two and two other access points in the central northern portions of the project site. The applicant also proposes a total of 14.5 acres of open space area while 13.9 acres is required. Proposed amenities comprise of a pool and cabana, a totlot area, and pockets of passive green space shared with Faces One and Two. The stormwater system will be served by the existing tract F located within Faces One and Two on the eastern portion. The Development Review Committee recommends approval and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T transitional to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, assignment of neighborhood overlay district, and approval of the master plan major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, does the applicant have a presentation?
Well, I have a question for the staff.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is this subdivision going to connect to Downman Drive?
No.
No, sir.
It looks like it is on the plans here.
There's no, there's no connection for Downman Drive. I think that was established under Faces One and Two.
Correct.
But I'll let the applicant elaborate a little bit more.
Sir, if you please give your name and address for the record.
Jeff Summitt with Summit Engineering, address is 3667 Simonton Place, Lake Mary, Florida. So, in regards to Downman though, there is no connection to Downman. As part of the approval for the land use that was done on these properties prior to this application, it was conditioned by the council that there would be no connection to Downman Drive.
Because it just shows a connection here on the ground.
It does not, that's a tract.
It's a tract, it's an open space.
It looks like, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just an open space tract, is what it is.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. Yeah.
All right, do we have any more questions of staff or the applicant?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we will close the discussion and bring it back to the board. Oh, I'm sorry. Please. If you would state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Jong Choi, my address 2553 West Kelly Park Road, which is, was the white rectangle covered by the upside-down L shape, which was proposed. And we, our family, own the business, we've been running business, the plant nursery over there over 20 years now, and we see the changes, and is there any protection plan for the existing, the residents over there? I'm just wondering. It changes come in, and I have a friend of mine run the same type of business, they're getting the surrounding developed for the residential area and everything, but they're getting flooded, and they've been fighting over with the developers, and they have all kinds of problems, so I'm just wondering if there's any protection plan?
I mean, specifically, were you speaking of the flooding issue at somewhere else?
Yeah, I mean, if they raised the ground level, I mean, I don't know the plan, what the plan's gonna be, but never been told to.
Anything that is plotted out has to have drainage or retention equivalent to the amount of square footage of the property, and that's based in the code, and that usually resolves issues like that, not, of course, not always. But I don't, other than that, I don't understand, as far as protection, I don't understand what you mean.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, they are doing the survey, and they did the whole, like, you know, my property is not in the development plan or anything, but, you know, they already do the survey some sort, and I found a hole in my property, and nobody told me about that, so I was, it brought me a little concern about this development, and I'm kind of lost out there, see what's going on.
Okay. Maybe, maybe staff can address that as far as the survey, I don't know what that would be, they're surveying the property that's adjacent to you, I assume.
I mean, I never been advised or any told or anything.
Right, well, again, if that property, you know, there was a notice sent out when the zoning was changed, the future land use, but as far as, I don't understand, I understand your concerns.
You wouldn't send a notification out that they're surveying the property?
Yeah, but, you know, I found a hole, I mean, was it tagged by the surveying company, whatever, and then nobody told me about that, I just found it up on my own, so.
That I couldn't answer, I've never heard, yeah, I've never heard of that happening either.
This thing kind of, I mean, this kind of thing happened, and it raised me a concern, and, yeah, I just don't know what to do, so I'm here to ask.
How big of a hole? I mean, was it? It was pretty big. Would they have gone on somebody else's property?
Well, if they're doing the survey, I mean, surveyors do have rights to go onto properties in order to effectuate their survey, and if they're locating the markers and the other survey markings, I mean, there might be a question that what someone believes is their property, once the survey is confirmed, may not actually be their property. Surveyor is there to actually confirm the property lines based on surveys, so I know that surveyors have certain rights to enter onto property to complete surveys, so, but there's no public notification of surveyor going on on the property, there's no obligation on the part of the city to notify property owners, the surveyor is, is gonna go on.
Did you see any survey stakes, you know, where, you know, that would demonstrate?
No market, but, you know, there was a little tag hanging by the fence, so that's why I found that.
Yeah, so.
That sounds like a regrettable mistake to me, you know, by some survey company.
Survey stake, yeah.
I don't think there's anything we could do about it.
I mean, when you, when you say a hole, are you talking about a small hole in the ground where they put a stake in the ground, or are you talking about?
No, actually, the size of like a football, maybe?
Okay.
I just couldn't find out how deep it's going to, but it was, I found a hole in the angle, so it was reaching from the neighbor's property through the fence and to my property, so no one gave me notice, and.
Well, that doesn't sound like something that the surveyors would do, but no matter, as the surveying's done, and there shouldn't be any more surveyors on your property or around your property at this point, there'll be a considerable amount of construction.
Yeah, but, you know, it was, I found it in a kind of dangerous way, and I mean, I was on the moor, I got tilted by the hole, nobody gave me notice, so this kind of behavior, I mean, I don't know what's going on in the future.
Can you show me where your property is? Come on, I'm trying to narrow it.
This one right here.
And where was the hole, was it in the back?
Yeah, by the fence, and, yeah, it's on my side of property, it's not theirs, and I saw that it was through the fence, it dug it in the angle, so.
That'd be something surveyor did, we don't have any control over what they, yeah.
And then these are not issues that are relevant to the matter that's before the court right now.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you on that one, it's the survey companies that do that kind of stuff, and.
Okay, they're not admitting it, so, yeah.
How deep was it?
It was pretty deep, but, you know, I couldn't even find it.
Okay.
I just don't want.
Don't want them on your property, I get that, yeah, yeah. I don't have an answer, because it's, that's out of our, that's out of our purview, we can't, we can't police the survey.
If anything, this kind of happened in.
I've never heard of that before. I've, I've heard, like, the attorney mentioned, I've heard of where the state turned out to be different.
There was no sign around, did it?
Yeah. No, that's, it's an odd one, like I said, I haven't typed.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks for having me.
All righty, bring that back to the board. We need a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed Oaks at Kelly Park Phase Three dash change of zoning and master plan slash major development plan consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T transitional to KPI dash MU, Kelly Park Interchange dash mixed use, assignment of the neighborhood overlay district and approval of the master plan slash major development plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Washington, second by Commissioner Orundo. Any further discussion? No, sir. Have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All righty, moving on to the 451 Commerce Park Major Development Plan, request for approval of the plan.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division, this is a request to recommend approval of the 451 Commerce Park Major Development Plan. Property is located in the southeast corner of Marshall Lake Road and State Road 451. The aerial shows that the project site is surrounded by industrial centers. The 451 Commerce Park Major Development Plan proposes the development of an industrial center for warehouse, storage, office, as well as vehicle and trailer parking on approximately 22 acres. Building A comprises of over 129,000 square feet of warehouse storage area and over 14,000 square feet of office area. Building B consists of approximately 102,000 square feet of warehouse storage area and almost 14,000 square feet of office area. While the required parking is 68 spaces, the applicant is proposing 77 parking spaces with eight accessible spaces. Maximum permitted height is, maximum permitted height is 45 feet. Project will have two full access connections to Marshall Lake Road. The city and developer are negotiating a transportation impact fee credit agreement that will require the developer to make substantial improvements to the condition of Marshall Lake Road from the project's western property line on Marshall Lake Road and east to the point, approximately 200 feet west of Bradshaw Road, where Marshall Lake Road has already been improved. The DRC recommends approval and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the 451 Commerce Park Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, anyone have questions of staff?
Now, I have a question, are these buildings that are being proposed, these are very similar in look to the buildings that are nearby in the Cooper Commerce Park?
Bigger.
Bigger, yeah, yeah, yeah.
As far as facade goes?
Yeah, yeah, I think the copper color, the brick.
I don't think the architectural renderings are gonna be the same as those copper-colored brick buildings, correct?
No, they're tilt-up, tilt-up buildings.
Tilt-up, okay.
So it would be, you know, there's a piece of glass on the entries of the next of the buildings.
Similar to the other industrial warehousing that's going up all across town.
Kind of the newer ones.
Gotcha.
Right, any, does the applicant have a presentation? All righty. Any further discussion? All right, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of the 451 Commerce Park Major Development Plan, subject to the major development plan, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Have a motion by Commissioner Orundo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan, any further discussion? Have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Subject is the Kelly Park property, AKA Crossroads at Kelly Park, major development plan for the approval of the major development plan on Detroit.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division, this is a request to recommend approval of the Kelly Park Property Major Development Plan. Property is located south of Anditch Road and east of Round Lake Road within the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area. It's approximately 205 acres in size. The Kelly Park property known as Crossroads at Kelly Park Major Development Plan proposes the development of 670 single-family detached residences and 205 acres. The residential units will be a mix of 498 lots with a minimum width of 52 feet and 153 lots with a minimum of 40 feet. Lots with 40 feet in width will be rear-loaded. The applicant proposes a minimum living area of 1,200 square feet. Kelly Park Form-Based Code requires developments within the neighborhood overlay to dedicate a minimum of 20% land area for open space and 15% of land area for open space and transitional overlay. The applicant is proposing 40.8 acres of open space for the project where 39.8 acres are required. The open space and recreation spaces include two pools with restroom facilities and a trail system meandering throughout the development. In addition, a 25-foot buffer is proposed at the northern end of the development along Anditch Road pursuant to Section R of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code, which has been amended just recently. The applicant is proposing to provide tract P16 as being open to the public and privately owned and maintained. At a minimum, the applicant will be providing turn lanes at the Kelly Park Road and Round Lake Road intersection and a signal at the project entrance on Kelly Park Road. They will also participate in the design and construction of four-lane Kelly Park Road and signals of Golden Gem Road, Effie Lane, and the State Road 429 ramps. The DRC recommends approval and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
I have a question.
Okay.
Hi, Jean, how are you?
Hi.
We know that the lot of traffic will be going in and out from Kelly Park, we know that, it's written. The map, though, it just shows the property that's a question here tonight. Why isn't there a piece of property connecting from what we're seeing to Kelly Park?
The connection is actually, it's, it's part of another portion of the project development that leads to Kelly Park Road.
Right.
But that will be later developed.
Yeah, they basically have a road easement up until some of those other properties get developed on both sides adjacent to Kelly Park itself, so their main access is still going down to Kelly Park, but they also have a secondary access off of Anditch Road for those that don't want to go to that particular one.
And the, and that access, the access to Kelly Park Road was approved with the rezoning master plan. So it's a thin sliver going down here.
Okay, all right. It's just not shown here.
Sure.
Okay, who did the transportation analysis on this project?
Pam Richmond, unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight.
I'm just curious with the, it seems, the number seems a little low for 975 units to only have 761 peak hour trips, but more is the Anditch Road, it says 95% project entering, exiting from Kelly Park and Anditch Road with 5%. I would assume most people aren't gonna drive entirely through the whole neighborhood all the way to the front to Kelly Park if they live in the back half, but that's right, Pam's not here, I guess.
It's that accessibility thing going over to the interchange, that's going over to Anditch Road and then either heading down Effie Drive or Plymouth Sorento to get to the interchange. My guess is they'll probably discover that is easier to do than going, like you just said, through the whole subdivision.
Right, that's what I was, I said that 5% number seems kind of low, because if I was, if I was in there and I wanted to come here, I would go to Plymouth Sorento Road, I wouldn't go the other way, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, really, what's the speed limit gonna be, 25 miles an hour?
Speed limit where?
Within the subdivision.
Probably 25.
Yeah, so it'd be a lot easier.
Yeah, that's kind of a typical.
To head north and rather south.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a slow go.
Any further questions of staff?
Yeah, I got a question and a comment. First of all, I mean, whenever I review this plan, I like the fact that they had the 21 acres of trees in the middle, and I like the way that it was drawn out here even with existing trees and new trees, I think that was accretive to the community. And my question was, though, with the, with the school situation here, where the Orange County Public Schools appear to be unable to support the children that would be living in this neighborhood, did I read that correctly?
Hey, if I recall correctly, they're deficient on their concurrency. I know they have capacity because this was part of the previous Kelly Park DRI, so entitlements have been there in terms of capacity, but I think, land's correct me if I'm wrong, they entered into a concurrency mitigation agreement with Orange County, which they have to put money in a pot and.
So there is a plan to address that in the future?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of a two-step system regarding the schools, is that during the development stage or this, this pre-development stage, they, we determine what the capacity is available, if there's any, any at all, and then, once they get into the development itself, they do enter into a concurrency agreement with Orange County Public Schools that basically when they, when they start pulling permits, they pay money to Orange County, Orange County writes us a check, and then we apply that towards the building permits. So, the, unfortunately, the way the school system is set up, the legislation has basically curtailed any new development of schools until they're way over capacity, and then, then they play catch-up, it takes them a year to, if they already have the property, it's great, but if they, fortunately, they do have different properties that Orange County School, Schools have purchased different properties around the area, but then it's a year to two years before the school's actually built, similar to the one over at Jason Dwelly that's actually opening up in August, so.
Sure, sure, I understand how chasing your tail works, because I have a job.
Yeah.
That's good, thanks.
A question.
Okay.
This project came before, once before, and we spent a lot of time talking about the traffic that's gonna be, you know, coming in and out of there, and it's, the question about the roadway's failing, meaning backing up, is talked about here again, but it also, this time, we, we understand that the developer will participate in improving or minimizing the failure of those roads.
Yes.
I'm just curious, how would that look like?
It's a four, it's gonna be a four-lane road, basically from, oh, gosh, Mike, do you remember how far? Okay.
Excuse me?
From this entrance to Plymouth Sorento, basically the interchange area where you're gonna develop the, you know, where the majority of the development and the majority of the traffic is gonna be occurring. As you go out from there, it dissipates, because this, the Kelly Park Interchange, that's, that, this is the area that we're gonna have the main concentration of all the development from residential to commercial and industrial.
Okay, now, there's also, as you know, there's another project even further west.
There's another project to the west, correct?
Yeah, so this road improvement is not gonna extend down that far.
Not that far, no.
No. We also were told that there are, is work to improve, manage the traffic flow. We saw something that talked about, you know, managed control devices, stoplights, per se, you know, all along that route, you know, probably at this intersection, I'm not sure, I'm just thinking.
I believe this intersection is gonna get one and Golden Gem and, I believe, Effie. We aren't sure about Effie yet.
I don't know about Effie, but Golden Gem, it's my understanding Golden Gem's one of them also.
Yeah, and also at the, where you have the 429 traffic coming off or onto Kelly Park, are the stoplights gonna be there?
They're already there, I thought.
No, they're not, no stoplights.
I can't recall, I know Pam, I wish she were here, I'm sorry she couldn't be, but I know that a good bit of the Kelly Park section that is within the KPI Form-Based Code area, that portion is getting widened. I think she's, she has an entire plan on it.
Yeah.
I don't know if she ever made this, I think she made that presentation at one point for Planning Commission.
Yeah, that was part of the, I believe that was part of the presentation that you sat through a couple meetings ago.
I can't recall, but, yeah, Kelly, a good bit of Kelly Park is getting improved.
So, lots will be happening up there long-term, running the road and stoplights, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, we're also requiring developers that come on to Plymouth Sorento Road to dedicate right-of-ways that, hopefully, because Orange County has it on their list somewhere, that it will be widened as well, so, not sure what the timeframe on that is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? Staff are active. Anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a vote. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed Kelly Park property, AKA Crossroads at Kelly Park, dash major development plan.
Park, Major Development Plan consistent with the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code incompatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the major development plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Have a motion by Commissioner Washington, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to Magnolia Terrace Subdivision Platte Approval.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division, this is a request to recommend approval of the Platte for Magnolia Terrace Residential Subdivision. Subject properties are located east of South Binion Road and south of Woollett Avenue. The Magnolia Terrace subdivision is located, subdivision proposes 124 single-family detached units and 176 townhome units developed in two phases. Platte is consistent with the major development plan approved by the City Council on February 8, 2022. The construction site plan was subsequently approved by Development Review Committee on May 18, 2022. This is the Phase Two Platte. The DRC recommends approval and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Magnolia Terrace Subdivision Platte. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Again, real quick, Platts, this is just the legal recordation process for something that's already been approved.
And this is for both Platts?
Phase one and two, yes.
All right, does anyone have any questions of staff? The applicant here, would they like to speak? Anyone from the public here like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Magnolia Terrace Subdivision Platte, subject to the major development plan, reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, and findings in the staff report.
Have a motion by Commissioner Orundo, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Dumey, any further discussion? To a vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Christian Togmas, Planning Department, this is a request to recommend approval of the Platte for Ivy Trails. The subject property is located at 818 South Binion Road, which is east of State Road 429 and west of Binion Road. The Ivy Trail Platte proposes a total of 67 single-family detached homes. The construction site plan was previously approved by the DRC on August 19, 2021. The Development Review Committee recommends approval and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Ivy Trails Platte, subject to the major development plan, review of the city engineer and city surveyor, and the findings in the staff report, and staff and applicant is available for questions.
Does anyone have any questions of staff? Questions of the applicant? Does anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I can take this one. I recommend approval of the Ivy Trails Platte, subject to the major development plan, reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, and the findings in the staff report.
Have a motion by Commissioner Dumey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orundo, any further discussion? Have a vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, item five.
Again, for the record, Christian Togmas, Planning Department, this is a request to recommend the approval of the Platte for the Wind Dixie Platte. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of East Main Street and McGee Avenue. The construction site plan was previously approved by the DRC on February 15, 2022. The applicant has also dedicated 10 feet of right-ofway adjacent to Monroe Avenue. The DRC recommends approval and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Wind Dixie Platte, subject to the major development plan, review of the city engineer and city surveyor, and the findings in the staff report, and staff is available for questions, and I don't know if the applicant is...
Very well, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone have questions of staff?
Yeah, I got a question, I thought this was already actually being done.
They started work on the project, but the Platte again is legal recordation of the property, so that they basically are making sure they own the property and it's legally recorded at the county.
Okay, understood.
Also separated out, making sure those parcels are separated and things like that.
Anyone have questions for the applicant? Does anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of the Wind Dixie Platte, subject to the construction site plan, reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor, and the findings in the staff report.
Motion by Commissioner Orundo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, any further discussion? No, we'll have a vote then, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, do we have any old business?
Yes, Jim, last time the commission, because we've been, always had questions about, I think Commissioner Lowndour brought this up, about the school capacity reports.
I've...
You know, and I don't want to go into words in your mouth, but I thought you said we might have an opportunity of getting a presentation.
Actually, I've got that handled. We had talked to the school, a couple of representatives for the school, and they, we have also gotten that same request from City Council. So we are looking to get a presentation to City Council, and rather than doing it twice, what we were gonna do is as soon as we get the timeframe, basically invite you to come to the meeting, and that way everybody kind of gets the same information at the same time, can answer, ask and answer questions, things like that. But that way, we get it from the horse's mouth from both of it, from both groups. We'll keep you posted, you know, as soon as we find that out. That was gonna be one of my information for new items.
When is that, how far out is that?
I'm hoping to get it within the next couple meetings. It just depends on, you know, how busy they are, but, which will lead me into the next item in a minute.
I know, Commissioner Dumey, you had some questions about the school capacity, and in a nutshell, we had said that in the past, if we waited on school capacity, we'd never approve a single house. But...
That's right.
I attended one of their meetings at the school board where they're discussing capacity, and it's, for lack of a better term, it's fascinating the amount of input that has to be put in there. You don't think about it, you think about it in the abstract, we're building new houses, we need a new school, but it's much broader than that. It's like in a neighborhood, like take my neighborhood, for example, when my children were small, there was 26 kids in my immediate neighborhood. There's four now. So as a neighborhood goes in, that has a big school capacity, but there may be a neighborhood right down the street that is falling off drastically, and that they kind of go through that, and it really is fascinating, and it does show you, as much as you want to throw rocks, oh, you guys never approve anything, you don't have enough schools, when you look at that, to me, insurmountable task, trying to predict that and stay on top of it, that's why you see a brand-new school and then portables will be there. But then, five years later, all the portables are gone. So it's really interesting, but, yeah, there's a lot more to it than the, you know, just the base, looking at, well, we need another school. Well, it doesn't always apply like that, so I think that'll be really interesting, and it's important for us to see that.
Even the portables have changed, they used to be like a mobile home. I mean, they were very rickety, they didn't have facilities, the air conditioning, if they worked, it was barely, and the new ones that they've got, you know, if a hurricane comes through, you want to be in one of those portables, because they are, they're heavy, they do not move, they have facilities, they have good air conditioning, it's a totally different type of portable, but, and they're, you know, they're made, they're a strong building.
Something fascinating that they did say, that they have a dedicated crew, that their whole job for Orange County is to move portables.
Yeah.
Because schools can change, I don't remember the timeline, but within a six, like a six-month period, they keep polling and checking, and then they'll take a portable from this school and over here, and they're back and forth all the time, and they have a crew that does nothing but move portables around, which is fascinating.
You don't ever get behind one on the road, because they do not go fast.
I know when they finished the pop, they had six portables there the day it opened.
Yep.
And my question was obviously, you know, is there something wrong with you, couldn't figure out how many people you need up front? Well, the growth, if it takes a year for the school, we'll put up a subdivision in six months, and it'll be full of people in nine months, so, you know, the prediction is tough.
Yeah, just kind of a poor look for the city sometimes.
Mm-hmm. All right. Any old business? Nope, any more new business?
New business, I, after, I mentioned to a couple of you that we need to vote for a new chair and a new vice chair. I'm sorry I didn't put it in, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, but next month we have an extremely full agenda. We've got, right now, we've got, I think it's 12 items on the item, on the list, so rather than wait for next month to, because it's gonna be probably twice as long as what this one is, I would like to toss it out here and see if you would like to go ahead and vote for the chair and vice chair, and get that part done. So basically, looking for nominations and then votes.
Would anybody do that now?
Certainly.
Yeah? Alrighty. We need a nomination for the chair.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Howard Washington for chair.
Do I have a second? Second there, second. Put it to a vote, all in favor? Say aye?
Aye, yeah.
He has to accept the nomination first before it's put to a vote.
Yeah.
That's so funny. The train just ran out of the station.
I guess the big question is, do you want to be chair?
We don't mess around.
Well, I kind of have this hierarchy thing, it's who I grew up, but...
Can you lean up to the mic, I can't...
You are the vice chair. You're acting president. I'm gonna just say it out, then we just work through it, right? I'd like to see you become the chair, and I'd like to become the vice chair. That's my idea.
Okay. Well, we would need to, how would we do that? You would need to nominate?
Would you accept the nomination as chairman?
Yes.
And I need somebody to nominate me.
Okay.
Do we have to vote one at a time?
If that was seconded...
Do we need to finish his vote?
Well... Or the motion maker can withdraw their motion, and the second can accept, second the withdrawal of the motion.
Okay, the first motion, I'll withdraw.
Withdraw your second? I nominated you for chairman. Well, you have to, you have to...
You have to withdraw the first nomination.
Your second. Okay, so that's closed and withdrawn. Okay, do we have any nominations for chair? Yes.
You need to verbalize the whole thing.
Mr. Gessler. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Washington. All right, we have a vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we need a nomination for a vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, oh, go ahead. I can nominate Mr. Washington to be the vice chair of the board.
We have a motion for Commissioner Washington for vice chair, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orundo, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I want to welcome you all to the Planning Commission for 2022 as our new commission. Thank you very much again.
Well, you ran like that, you were, like you were on fire.
We'll get his feet wet.
The good part is, you don't have to read these big, long things. All right, is there any more new business? Meeting adjourned.